I wanted to wait till I was 10 so I could do Hunter Ed and go deer hunting and have Alina hunting.
Raya and her mom are participants in a Junior Jack Camp that helps teach youth hunting skills. But it's about more than just learning how to hunt.
You know, we're seeing a lot more girls out hunting. We're seeing them more at these camps. And it's so great to see these girls out here because hunting gives them a sense of pride, I think. You know, they can go out, they can harvest their own meat, bring it home, and bring it to their table. And it's a great bonding time between either their mother or their father or grandparent, whoever goes out with them. And it's just that sense of pride in being able to go out there and do it. And, you know, boys have done this for so long and the girls are finally picking up on it and they're wanting to get out there too. And I think it's fantastic.
I've been hunting with my husband when she was very little. And that was never a question. She always enjoyed to go with us to go hunt. And we couldn't wait for her. We go hunting first, you know, on her own, get our first tag.
It didn't take long for Raya to experience the ultimate in the hunting and harvesting experience.
In Arizona, I got a buck. And that was my first deer harvested in Arizona. My dad and I like to make sausages. And with the Havalina that we get, we make chorizo and snack sticks.
A few years ago, Erica Kirkpatrick was one of the young hunters participating in the Junior Jack Camp.
Hunting for us, my dad and I, have always just been kind of our time together.
Today, she comes to mentor and encourage younger girls to join in the hunts.
I just think that they need to know that hunting is a fun experience. It can be just this fun thing. You just get to meet these amazing people and you get to make amazing friends that you can just grow up and keep throughout your life. Hunting is a heritage. It's something that's passed down from parent to child. And it's really important to keep that because there's so much significant bonding and skills that kids learn when they're out hunting. And it's really important to keep that alive because I really believe in that time, you know, it's away from the computers, away from the cellphone, and it's mom and dad and the kid, or mom and the kid, or dad and the kid, however it works out. And they have time to go out by themselves, out in the middle of nowhere, and just spend some time together and learn some valuable skills, learn about ethics, learn about humane treatment of animals, learn about, you know, how to bring meat to their table. And it's just so important to keep that alive and so that people stay connected with the outdoors.
Raya's mother Corinne also believes that her daughter takes away something more from hunting game.
I think hunting is going to make her a more patient person. It's gonna teach her, you know, that you don't have to be afraid. It's gonna teach her somehow a sense of where she's at. She'll just be a strong, confident woman one day and go out and hunt by herself.
Hi, I'm Jim Hufflefinger, the Wildlife Science Coordinator for Arizona Game and Fish. And we're at the Junior Jack Camp 2017. And this is a camp where we have kids come down, they learn how to hunt jackrabbits, how to find some good jackrabbit habitat, how to clean the jackrabbit, and how to cook them. Okay, so we've got a cast iron wok that's got some oil in, and it's hot. And so we're putting some diced pieces of jackrabbit meat in the wok. And we're gonna season it and brown it up so it has a nice braised, caramelized covering. And when we get all the meat browned, then we'll start up our stew stock. And we'll cook it for a couple hours. Whenever I'm making stew, I like to take the stew chunks and brown it and get a nice brown coating on there. And I use a lot of different seasonings. I use just a matchpiece barbecue seasoning or a low resevered salt. It doesn't matter so much the seasoning, just to get a little bit of spice on there to caramelize on the meat when it browns. A lot of people, when I tell them that we're shooting jackrabbits and we're eating jackrabbits, their first comment is, "You can't really eat jackrabbits, can you?" But it's really a social thing. It's a social taboo. The jackrabbits are actually hares. They're not technically rabbits, like a cotton tail is a rabbit. And the European hare is eaten widely, but for some reason, the North American hare or jackrabbit, people don't think of them as game animals. But the meat is actually not like chicken. The meat is actually like beef. And so if you cook it up using a beef stew or kind of a beef carnitas or any kind of recipe that uses beef or duck red meat, it cooks up fantastic. And a lot of times, you can't even tell the difference between beef and jackrabbit. The tender ones that come out of the back are very tender. Some people keep those separate because you can use those in recipes that call for a little bit lighter meat, like just a stir-won fish or stir-fry and just stir fry those up. Whereas the legs, we usually use it for stew or for carnitas with green chilies or just regular chilies. So the meat has a really good beefy-like taste. And we started this camp probably about six or seven years ago. Not many people were posting pictures on the internet or any place of jackrabbit they'd killed. But after a few years of this camp, we started seeing some of the picture boards at Sports and Warehouse and some of the online forums, we started seeing a lot of kids with jackrabbits. And so I think we're really making a difference and teaching people that this is, jackrabbits are an untapped resource. So now we're starting the stew stock. So I've got a pot of stew with the water warming up, with three gallons of water. And then I'm just gonna add regular beef stew seasoning that you get at Walmart. Pretty simple recipe. And it's an easy way to get the seasoning right. So for this recipe, the way we have it scaled for the number of kids here, we're doing three gallons of water and four packets of seasoning. So I'm just adding the vegetables. And the vegetables that I buy are carrots and tomatoes, or carrots and potatoes. But the potatoes are nearly done. And so I've separated them and I add the carrots first, let those cook for a couple hours before we add the potatoes right at the end. The Coronex Valgrime Megg, which makes that stew pickin' up nicely. So not only can kids go out and have fun and learn some hunting skills, but they can come home and provide a delicious pot of stew for the family. You should try it. This is an easy recipe to make. Try it at home and I think you're gonna enjoy it.
We had some amazing entries this year. We had a little over 130.
The artwork is outstanding.
Some of the six-year-olds submitted artwork with that was just as good as the 15 or 16-year-olds. So we were very impressed by that.
This was created by Arizona students in grades K through 12 to compete in the federal Junior Duck Stamp Competition. Winners were announced April 8 at the Rio Salado Audubon Center in Phoenix. The Best of Show went to 16-year-old Katrina Ja for her colored pencil drawing of a mallard.
And I see ducks around, like the lakes and everything when we go to parks. And I thought it'd be cool if we could see like the ripples it makes under the water. So I decided to draw this. It feels great. Yeah, hopefully it will get something in Nationals, but, you know.
Katrina's artwork will now compete with the Best of Show from all 50 states. The winner is turned into a stamp that will be sold to collectors, and the money goes back into the Junior Duck Stamp Program and conservation education.
The reason the Arizona Wildlife Service does this program is to encourage kids to learn about wildlife conservation and habitat conservation. And so they're encouraged to learn about it, to go out and take photos, to take studies, and then the culmination is a piece of artwork. So it's melding science and art together.
Arizona boasts 556 confirmed species of birds plus 35 species that are unconfirmed. It's no wonder that birding is a popular pastime here, enjoyed by thousands every day. One reason for birding's popularity is a chance to enjoy the natural world. No matter where you live, you can interact with birds. In fact, some of the best birding spots are right in your own backyard.
There's a snow eegret in the ibis there.
Peggy Coleman, avid bird photographer, discusses how she combines her passion for photography and birding.
I've had a love of photography my entire life. The first bird that got me interested in bird photography was our friend the cactus wren. One day when I was at the desert botanical garden, walking along, just enjoying the beautiful garden, and came across a cactus wren sitting on a cactus and took a picture. And about the time I took the picture, he looked up. And it is still, to this day, my favorite photograph of a cactus wren. That was the one that did it for me. From there, it was just love of birds. I came back naturally. My grandmother raised finches when I was a little girl. And my parents loved birds, and more so my father than anything. He taught me very well that some of the best places to see birds and wildlife is in your own backyard. And that is definitely where I spend a lot of my time. Being that I live in a very urban area, I live in a home that's over 100 years old, historical home in downtown Glendale, I spend a lot of time in the backyard just seeing who flies in. And I'm rarely disappointed. Had a family of Harris's hawks that came to visit last year, and really a lot of fun watching the juveniles with that. I had a Lewis's woodpeckers come down, which is unusual for the valley, and camped in the front palm trees for the winter. So that's how it began.
Whether you live in a historic house or a downtown high-rise apartment, there are a lot of public places around the valley to watch, enjoy, and photograph birds and other wildlife.
We have some beautiful parks. Papago Park is one of my favorite places to see birds. The Glendale Recharge Ponds, although not a favorite place for photographers, is a wonderful place to spot some of our winter visitors. Trace Rios, which is further south, some of the places out here, Zamhale Park, which is, again, not a favorite place for photographers.
There is one place that is dear to the heart of the serious birder, so much so that it has been designated an Arizona Important Bird Area. Mention the Riparian, and they all know you're talking about the Gilbert Water Ranch.
The Gilbert Riparian is an absolute jewel for this area. It has seven ponds that vary in how much they're filled and therefore bringing a variety of different birds throughout the season. Every season is different. We have ducks in the winter. We have eaglets almost year-round. The northern harrier and some of the other hawks are making an appearance right now. It's just an amazing place that you can wander around for hours and just see a variety of birds. And I also enjoy the company of other birders. Oh, she is right there. Because that's part of the fun of bird photography as well, is getting to know some of the people who share your passion.
On a recent outing to the Riparian, Peggy met up with friend and fellow photographer Jaime Ontiveros for a personal tour of the area.
There's all kinds of wildlife at the Riparian. You definitely can see coyotes at pretty much any given visit. Plenty of bunny rabbits, lots of birds. We've even had a few bobcats.
Bobcats out here?
Couple of bobcats along the way. Yep. An owl, great-horned owl in this tree right over here. I'll tell ya, it sat there and let everybody who walked by take pictures of him. I couldn't believe it. Let's check out Pond Five here, Jaime. Usually, some good ducks out there. Maybe we might see the harrier. Well, we've got a snow eegret out there. And yep, there's our northern harrier. He's flying in. Looks like the female coming in.
The back of Pond Five is a regular haunt of the northern harriers, including one male the birders refer to as the gray ghost.
And there goes a snow eegret catching my eye here. Can't miss an eegret shot. Oh, boy. Wildlife photography is all about patience. There's no question about that. Setting up and watching and waiting, but the payoff is amazing, that's for sure.
I call it fishing with a camera.
Definitely. There's a hunting gray eegret out there right now.
And you know your birds.
Yep. The gray eegret has orange beak and no yellow slippers. The snow eegret's got the little yellow slippers. So that's the easiest way to tell them apart. Oh, yeah. Got some great action shots there. Fun stuff. When they can't find fish, they'll go after the rats and the mice in the field.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. I actually watched a blue heron take down a turtle, about this big.
Oh, my gosh.
No kidding.
What, just by beaking at it?
Just grabbed it and sucked it down. Amazing. I've seen them take frogs.
The turtle did.
And lots of mice and rats, that's for sure. Talk about patience. Watch this gray eegret just waiting for his prey to surface. Little ruffle, little grooming, love that. Love to get those shots.
Because it's just kind of frustrating. You come to one pond, there's nothing there, and you have to go on.
Well, you have to do a better looking around when you get to the Riparian because you never know what pond is gonna be open, which one's gonna be active.
What are you looking for when you come out? I mean, obviously, the bird's sitting there, but I mean, are there little things that tell you this ought to be a good spot today?
Well, water helps. Water, and if you can see some activity, you know that there's some food because that's the two ingredients for birding.
The two that eat.
Yep, water and food. One of the things I love best is to find birds out in the open to get those portrait shots. But there's a great love in behavior shots and therefore catching them in the shadows and light, letting light work with you, and to create some, create a story with the birds. Behavior is definitely a lot of fun. It's without a doubt the number-one enchantment I have with this, with this birding, is their behavior. Learning what they do, learning to be, to predict, to be able to predict helps your photography greatly. If you can kind of figure out what they're gonna do next, where they're gonna fly, when they're gonna jump, it absolutely increases your success rate with birding photography.
This photo of the parenting behavior of American coots was chosen for the 2015 Arizona Wildlife Views calendar. Shazam, her now-famous picture of a green heron was the May poster bird for the department's 2014 calendar and won second place in the Arizona Highways Magazine 2014 Photography Contest. Because of her success, she is often asked, "What is the best camera for bird photography?"
The best camera for bird photography is the one you have in your hands. And what I mean by that is, I don't care if you're carrying a cellphone camera or a setup like this, which mine happens to be an Nikon D800 with an 80-400 lens. The whole beauty of birding and photography is just capturing your first few birds because I guarantee you, when you do, you'll get hooked, and then you'll want to move on. As far as a brand, depends on who you talk to. You generally join up on one team or the other when you start buying birding photography equipment. So Nikon versus Canon versus Sony, it's what works best for you.
Another consideration is the image size. The two most common choices are the full frame and the cropped sensors. Before spending a lot of money on equipment, talk to your camera store expert and see which one suits your needs best.
Most important is the lens. You want to get at least an 80-400 lens if you can, get something larger. God bless you because it gets real expensive. And typically, you do have to carry a tripod with you or a monopod with you in order to carry some of the bigger lenses. This is a great walk-around lens, the 80-400, which is what I prefer, handheld. And that is because you never know what you're gonna see. I can be shooting at a northern harrier out in the field and see an eegret over my shoulder, and then I'm on that. Oh, there's our guy. He'll be back. He's coming back into the field. Making the rounds. I can tell you, if there had been a lot of birds here, we would've known when that harrier was anywhere close to flying over. Because those birds are up. The most important variable in bird photography, in my opinion, is shutter speed. You want to keep your shutter speed up. Therefore, I keep it on 1,000 to 2,000 at all times. It's just the staple. It has to happen. If you're gonna shoot shutter speed priority, then your aperture is gonna, is gonna change. How your depth of field, how close you are to the bird is gonna vary. Again, one of the best things to do, in my opinion, is shoot manual, but that is kind of the way that I, that I go. The higher the ISO, the more noise in the photo. Oh, look at the little shorebirds. So close.
Another decision you'll need to make is whether to shoot JPG or RAW format. Each has distinct advantages, and Peggy isn't bashful about her preference.
Absolutely, I shoot RAW. That is the way, in my opinion, to photograph birds because it keeps, again, a lot of control in your hands with regard to processing. I process with Lightroom 5 and believe in it wholeheartedly for what we need to do. It's quick, it has amazing results, and has great storage capabilities, a lot of advantages for Lightroom. But yes, I do shoot RAW. Probably the best investment that you can make when you're getting into birding and bird photography is a good bird book, Sibley's, Peterson's Guide. There's lots of them out there.
Joining social media groups like Birding Arizona and the Southwest on Facebook will also get you a lot of great information about photography and new and different birding locations. Back in the day, the secret to successful wildlife photography was to shoot Kodachrome 64 and get up early in the morning. Well, in this digital age, few people shoot Kodachrome film, but the getting up early part hasn't changed.
The best time to find birds is when they're up first thing in the morning, and they're feeding, and guess what? That's the best time for us to get out with light and find the birds. And with a DSLR, a digital single-lens reflex camera, you've got lots and lots of ammunition in taking pictures one after another. Sunset is also a good time to find birds. Again, they're gonna get in there, they're eating and feeding just before they go to rest. And again, it's the best light for us. When you get into shooting wildlife, there's a passion that comes about that's unmatched. You just feel it. You become part of the nature, part of their scene, part of their lives, part of their world. And the blessing or the reward that comes from it is when you get home and look at your photos and see some of the pictures that you got. And it just, it sparks you to get back out there and go at it again.
Well, that's gonna do it for this edition of Arizona Wildlife Views. Remember to get outside and enjoy these amazing landscapes and wonderful wildlife that our state has to offer. Until next time, get outside and enjoy those Arizona wildlife views. The state is home to more than 800 animal species and over 50 million acres of public Only one state agency has what it takes to conserve and protect all of it for you. We are the Arizona Game and Fish Department.
I love my job. I get to help conserve Arizona's wildlife every day.
We're one of the world's leading wildlife management agencies. Our engaged, highly-performing workforce is committed to conserving and protecting Arizona's wildlife.
What makes me so proud of this group and having these women hunters in this program is bringing money to wildlife conservation.
For more than a century, hunters and anglers have been the backbone of the North American model of wildlife conservation. The money they spend on outdoor recreation is the lifeblood of conservation efforts in Arizona and across the country.
Our Department of Game and Fish does fantastic work without a dime from the state's general fund.
And so we really need to think about the future and diversify our revenue streams. This partnership is a great way to do that.
We're developing exciting new ways for more people to contribute to conservation.
We really could can conservation, right?
Gathered by policies of the Arizona Game and Fish Commission, we're responsible for managing wildlife in the public trust, and serving and protecting it for you and for future generations to enjoy. It's an awesome responsibility. That's why we use the best available science to guide all of our wildlife management decisions. On any given day, Arizona Game and Fish is taking care of sick and drug-induced wildlife. We're finding new and innovative ways to help endangered species.
Jack's this way. Come on. So we've got these detection dogs that are trying to snip out the fennel block for the bird. Hopefully, in the future, a new way to survey for fowls, and the dogs can cover a lot more land than a person can. I think the best thing about being a rite biologist is getting out in the field. This is just a stunning part of the state, and I get to go outside almost every day and help manage Arizona's wildlife.
We're also securing recreational access to public and private lands, working with valuable partners to improve wildlife habitat and their grazing and stalking fish. We're our best to keep up with an overwhelming public demand for fish in Arizona's lakes and streams.
A really cool project that we're working on is propagation and development of a brood for one of the two species of native Arizona trout. That's the huila trout. For me and Brian Bush, this is one of the coolest things we get to do.
Fishing, hunting, and outdoor recreation are big business in Arizona. Each year, Arizona's hunters and anglers spend more than $1.2 billion. That supports more than 18,000 Arizona jobs and generates nearly $132 million in state and local taxes.
Arizona Game and Fish is more than just hunting and fishing. It's boating, it's kayaking, it's wildlife viewing, it's OHV, just so much more.
Arizona Game and Fish is making it easier for families to simply enjoy all of the amazing outdoor recreational opportunities Arizona has to offer. Our world-class, boundary-shooting facility earned a five-star rating from the National Shooting Sports Foundation.
We're the best of the best at giving you a quality recreation experience.
And we're constantly training new recruits from modern age in wildlife management and public safety. Arizona Game and Fish is dedicated to conserve and protect.
Beautiful wild Apache trout, Arizona state fish.
We have a passion for wildlife and credible science. We respect and value the people we serve. We take public safety seriously. We do our jobs with integrity.
1 meter.
Measuring.
15.
Counting and identifying plants.
Seven is early. Move and saw.
These researchers from the Arizona Game and Fish Department are in southeastern Arizona, collecting data about the health of grassland habitats.
Grasslands are a really important ecosystem worldwide, and simultaneously, they're also one of our most imperiled.
Arizona's native grasslands are home to a rich diversity of plants and animals. They provide food for wildlife and livestock. They prevent erosion. And they help to replenish groundwater by collecting rain so it can slowly seep into the soil.
They serve a lot of ecosystem functions, including important habitat for wildlife, particularly grassland obligate wildlife.
Like pronghorn. It's the second fastest- It's the second fastest land mammal in North America, and it relies on open grasslands to see and evade predators. Too many trees leave them vulnerable to ambush by mountain lions and coyotes. Unfortunately, trees are taking over in many grassland habitats.
Here in southern Arizona, one issue with grasslands is woody plant encroachment, and so this, this velvet mesquite here, is sort of our prime problem down here. It's a native species, but after wildfire suppression, some unregulated grazing, drought, it has really taken off and expanded its range. It is great at surviving. It has these fantastic roots that are able to suck up a lot of water and prevent other vegetation species from accessing that really important resource. And I would say this is fairly light mesquite encroachment. It can get much thicker than this.
Restoring grasslands by relieving trees is a common approach to the problem. It can be done with fire, chemicals, or by grubbing, which uses heavy machinery to rip trees from the ground, roots and all.
We, the Arizona Game and Fish Department, as well as a lot of land management agencies and private landowners, put a lot of time and money into grassland restoration. And so, we have a real interest in knowing if certain of those techniques are more effective as well as more cost-effective to restore our native grasslands.
That's why they're conducting this research, to find out which grassland restoration techniques work the best and last the longest.
So we've been finding different sites that have been treated with different restoration techniques. So this plot is part of a site that was grubbed or extracted in 2015.
They survey each of these sites using a variety of methods.
One of them is line point intercept, where we lay out 50-meter transect tapes, and then we go along, and at every meter increment, we put down a pin.
And basically identify each plant that the pin hits in consecutive order. So at the very beginning, I'm hitting Lehman's Lovegrass up top, and the code for that is early.
And we take note of each species that pin intercepts, and then also the ground cover, because the ground cover can tell us something about erosion potential.
And sometimes, you know, it may go through and it may just miss everything, and that would count as nothing in soil. Hey, red. Oh, I got chinny too.
Another technique we use is called a species inventory, so that's just a simple, you know, 15-minute search.
They'll log every type of plants they find on a subplot of the site they're surveying.
So that will tell us something about species diversity, species richness of everything, you know, that's on the plot. .83 high. We're also doing tree density surveys. 1.89 height. Because, you know, a lot of the focus and impetus on grassland restoration is removing some of these woody species. 2.17 width. We have subplots within our larger plots, and we're simply going through and inventorying the number of trees and the size of the trees in there, and then also whether they're alive or dead, so we can get a mortality. Ooh, another black widow. And then, lastly, we've incorporated a visibility metric, because some of these grassland-obligate species, particularly pronghorn, they really depend on having long sightlines to feel comfortable in habitat.
Do eight.
So for that, we're using what's called a roll bell pole. So we have an observer and a person that is holding a pole, and the observer is simply counting, you know, what proportion of lines they can see along that pole, and that will get a sense of like the proportion of visibility of each site. So we've moved from the treatment to the control plots, so these control plots have not been treated. So we're seeing what we would expect here, that there's a greater density of trees and larger trees. And we've also taken great care to match our treatment and our control sites in terms of ecological potential, meaning that they have, you know, the same soil type, same slope, same aspect, same elevation, whenever possible. We want them in the same pasture so that they're subjected to the same grazing pressures.
After taking the exact same measurements on treated and control sites in southern and northern Arizona, the researchers will analyze the data.
We have these different indices of grassland health that we'll be comparing between the treated and control sites, and then we'll use those to assess the level of efficacy of a certain treatment type. We can do this research, and then hopefully, you know, it can inform decisions by land managers and help us allocate our very, you know, limited human and financial resources.
It's just one more example of how the Arizona Game and Fish Department uses science to make the best possible management decisions about habitat and wildlife conservation.
Did you know that preparing the first five feet around your home can make the biggest difference in protecting it from wildfire? That's because embers and small flames that come in contact with things that can burn, like dry leaves and grasses, are most often responsible for a home's destruction in a wildfire. Simple steps like removing debris, cleaning gutters, and pruning overhanging branches can mean the difference between your home surviving a wildfire and being overcome by it. To learn more ways you can protect your home from wildfire, visit NFPA.org/wildfire.
Wildfire Community Preparedness Day, or Prep Day, is Saturday, May 7. Prep Day is a great time to work on projects that help protect and prepare your home against wildfire. Whether it's cleaning debris around your home, under the deck of porch, or cleaning out the gutters, no effort is too small, and even a small task can make a big difference. Be part of Prep Day on May 7 and help make your home and community safer from wildfire.
I just want to say thank you for having us. The Grumpy Sicilian is a family restaurant, and it's a pleasure and honor to represent Prescott Valley and to be a part of this community. My job is really easy, pushing the restaurant because my partner Juvenile makes amazing food, as you know. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the support, and we want to be part of the community. The Crips fires affected a lot of the people out here in the community, and I just wanted to say that if there's anybody that is in need of food, or shelter, or movement, AC3 has vehicles, and trailers, and manpower that can help move people out of those areas. And obviously, the Grumpy Sicilian would love to provide food to anybody that's in need. So if you could do us a favor, get us in contact with anybody in this community that needs help. And thank you for having us. You guys are awesome.
I just want to say thank you for the support and everything.
Next up, CASA Senior Center, 40th Anniversary. Come on up, guys.
Congratulations to CASA Senior and Community Center for their 40th anniversary serving the Prescott Valley community. The town of Prescott Valley is proud to recognize and present this award with much appreciation for the exceptional services CASA has provided over the past 40 years to seniors and the community. Starting in 1982, CASA's mission has been to provide opportunities and resources with focus for active seniors in the Prescott Valley area through the promotion of skills, continuing growth in education, physical and mental health, and the participation in community services and social activities. CASA has been a leader in providing for the community by offering services and activities such as Meals on Wheels, group activities, and articles covering from how to protect yourself against internet fraud to signs of natural gas leak and more. I, Cal Pau Guda, mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby recognize by this award and congratulate the CASA Senior and Community Center's 40th anniversary and express our gratitude for the exemplary service that has made a significant and long-lasting impact on the community and senior citizens of the town of Prescott Valley. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the council and the mayor for all the support they've given us through the years. It's been a roller coaster ride, at least for the last 23 years. So, anyway, thank you so much. It's been wonderful, 40 years, and we love it. Mary?
Thank you. We especially appreciate you for thanking us and you two representing the council on our board. It's nice to have you there. Lots of ideas and lots of things they offer. And thank you so much for coming to everything we have. It's great to be supportive. This is a wonderful community, and we love it. Thank you.
Next up, Councilwoman Hepple is going to be addressing Bradshaw Mountain High School's Student of the Month.
Our Bradshaw Mountain High School Students of the Month, Hope Wells and Christopher Supergan, are actually both busy with the National Honor Society induction tonight, because that's what Students of the Month do. So, but we still want to recognize them, so they will be joining the May Students of the Month next month, and they'll all be here, and we can hear their bios and applaud them then. Thank you.
Excellent. Moving on, Item 4, Call the Public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any person wishing to address the council must complete a speaker card located inside the entrance of the council chambers and deliver it to the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Clerk?
Mr. Tom Chase?
Welcome, sir.
I just want to pull that microphone towards you.
I live on Prescott East Highway. There's a big time problem with all the traffic. There are six 25 mile an hour zones on it. Everybody drives 40 to 45 miles an hour, and it was because of the council that put the road through to Granville that we have all the traffic and the speeding problem. Three quarters of the people that go on that road don't live in Castle Canyon, okay? They're construction guys, landscaper guys, all the different trades that are going over there to work. Because of what you guys did on Granville, as far as putting the road through, they don't have to go through Granville. They cut through there. So you guys created the monster, and nothing's going on, because all of my neighbors say three years they've called to complain about it. It doesn't go past that. Well, guess what? I've owned that house for 16 years. My wife and I have been living in it for eight, okay? I'm going to make a difference, okay? I'm the one you've been getting probably and to be a part of this community. My job is really easy, pushing the restaurant because my partner Juvenile makes amazing food, as you know. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the support and we want to be part of the community. The Crips fires affected a lot of the people out here in the community and I just wanted to say that if there's anybody that is in need of food or shelter or movement, AC3 has vehicles and trailers and manpower that can help move people out of those areas. And obviously, the Grumpy Sicilian would love to provide food to anybody that's in need. So if you could do us a favor, get us in contact with anybody in this community that needs help. And thank you for having us. You guys are awesome.
I just want to say thank you for the support and everything.
Next up, Casa Senior Center, 40th anniversary. Come on up, guys.
Congratulations to Casa Senior and Community Center for their 40th anniversary serving the Prescott Valley community. The town of Prescott Valley is proud to recognize and present this award with much appreciation for the exceptional services Casa has provided over the past 40 years to seniors and the community. Starting in 1982, Casa's mission has been to provide opportunities and resources with focus for active seniors in the Prescott Valley area through the promotion of skills, continuing growth in education, physical and mental health, and the participation in community services and social activities. Casa has been a leader in providing for the community by offering services and activities such as meals on wheels, group activities, and articles covering from how to protect yourself against internet fraud to signs of natural gas leak and more. I, Cal Pau Guda, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby recognize by this award and congratulate the Casa Senior and Community Center's 40th anniversary and express our gratitude for the exemplary service that has made a significant and long-lasting impact on the community and senior citizens of the town of Prescott Valley. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the council and the mayor for all the support they've given us through the years. It's been a roller coaster ride, at least for the last 23 years. So anyway, thank you so much. It's been wonderful, 40 years, and we love it. Mary?
Thank you. We especially appreciate you for thanking us and you two representing the council on our board. It's nice to have you there. Lots of ideas and lots of things they offer. And thank you so much for coming to everything we have. It's great to be supportive. This is a wonderful community and we love it. Thank you.
Next up, Councilwoman Hepplely is going to be addressing Bradshaw Mountain High School Student of the Month.
Our Bradshaw Mountain High School Students of the Month, Hope Wells and Christopher Supergan, are actually both busy with the National Honor Society induction tonight because that's what students of the month do. So, but we still want to recognize them, so they will be joining the May Students of the Month next month and they'll all be here and we can hear their bios and applaud them then. Thank you.
Excellent. Moving on, item four, call the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any person wishing to address the council must complete a speaker card located inside the entrance of the council chambers and deliver it to the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Clerk?
Mr. Tom Chase?
Welcome, sir. We just want to pull that microphone towards you.
I won't yell. I live on Prescott East Highway. There's a big time problem with all the traffic. There are six 25 mile an hour zones on it. Everybody drives 40 to 45 miles an hour. And it was because of the council that put the road through to Granville that we have all the traffic and the speeding problem. Three quarters of the people that go on that road don't live in Castle Canyon, okay? They're construction guys, landscaper guys, all the different trades that are going over there to work. Because of what you guys did on Granville, as far as putting the road through, they don't have to go through Granville. They cut through there. So you guys created the monster and nothing's going on because all of my neighbors say, three years, they've called to complain about it. It doesn't go past that. Well, guess what? I've owned that house for 16 years. My wife and I have been living in it for eight, okay? I'm going to make a difference, okay? I'm the one you've been getting probably about code enforcement for putting up his own sign out there, okay? And I'll tell you, they pay more attention to my sign that I put out there than the walk, talking, speed thing that doesn't do a damn thing, okay? And I put two other 25 mile an hour signs up in front of my house, okay? You guys have created the monster and nobody wants to take responsibility because I live in the city, on my side of the street. Across the street is county, okay? I'm at the intersection of Sunset almost. That's all county. So you point the finger there, you point the finger there. Nobody wants to take responsibility for what's going on, okay? I've had people stop and tell me that was the best sign they ever saw. Good luck because that's as far as it's going to go. But I'm here to tell you, I'm not going to go away, okay? I was the Albertson's store manager for nine years when it closed, okay? I've lived in this community for over 20 years. I've had property here for 40, okay? Yes, we don't pay what Granville does with all of their subdivisions going on and all of the money that's getting kicked back because Castle Canyon isn't having new houses built in it as far as that. So I think there's some discrimination going on there between one area of Prescott Valley, down the street. That's why the road's there. Oh, yeah. Oh, and in 27 years, we're going to put the road all the way around and connect it with Sun Dog. Thank you for hearing me, but I'm not done.
Sir, you don't have to be done and I feel your frustration. I totally understand where you're coming from. Mr. Davidson has your information and, believe me, I believe you're going to be pleasantly surprised with some of the changes that are going to be occurring probably in the next six months over there.
I know about it.
And I, like I said, I get your frustration.
I can't talk to you.
We can't unring the bell, but we can hopefully make things better for you.
I'm not going to go away. If I have to come here every week, I will.
Yes, sir.
And like I said, all the neighbors that I talk to, they all weekend is lips or they won't call. They won't do anything. But guess what? I'm going to have it.
I understand. Thank you, sir. Clerk?
No other comments?
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item five, council communications. Councilman Kinzinger, start with you.
The only thing I would like to say is thank you to the firemen that are currently out fighting. This is a tough battle and I can't imagine being out there for two weeks from now and doing what they're doing, but I just want to say thank you and wish them luck and hopefully we can get this fire out shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. I just want to invite everybody out to the home show, so please visit this weekend, Friday between 9:00 and 5:00, Saturday between 9:00 and 5:00, and Sunday between 9:00 and 3:00. Our Mat Forest booth will be there in space 186 and also the town has a booth, so come by and see us. It's not just landscaping and hardscaping, but those are important as well, too. So speaking of Mat Forest, our Yavapai County overdose fatality review board annual report is out and there is a lot to celebrate. 59% of overdose deaths involve illegal fentanyl. For the first time in five years, accidental or undetermined overdose deaths decreased by 11%. And this is about the only place in the county. So go to hashtag #preventionworks and you can view the whole report at matforest.org. It's very interesting. I recently did a council chat on Relay for Life, our event in Prescott Valley, right on the greens, is on June 3rd. But there's a feeder event at Park Collective on Pav and Lake Valley on May 7th. Stop by around noon to 3:00 to view the classic cars. A big shout out to the 30 people who helped build the new trails up Glossford Hill. I'm told there will be more trail blazing opportunities in the next couple of months. Thanks to the PD for holding the bike rodeo. It was very well received and very well attended. It was an amazing turnout and I'm so proud of our officers who conducted double duty fitting bike helmets. And also PVDA is next week, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So please come out. We're going to have a great parade on Saturday and there's a lot of fun things happening in Prescott Valley next weekend. So please invite relatives and friends, eat in our restaurants, shop in our stores.
Councilwoman?
This Saturday is also the Pinwheel Party. So, and you can find me at both places, both the Pinwheel Party and YCCA Home Show tomorrow and Saturday. And my big news is I have been selected as a celebrity dancer in Dancing for the Stars, which is the Boys and Girls Club's main fundraiser of the year. It actually raises a third of their annual budget for both the Prescott Valley and the Prescott Club. So it's a huge event and we're just looking to make it fantastic. So just check out dancingforthestars.net. You can see all the celebrity dancers and their pros on there and then vote, buy tickets, and sponsor. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Some exciting news. We had several businesses respond to the applications for the exterior enhancement grant program and we're excited to see big improvements on Highway 69 in the next little while. And we are very pleased with this program and thank you for providing it from the council here to our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Town manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this week is Volunteer Appreciation Week and just, we today celebrated several dozen incredible volunteers who have dedicated literally hundreds, if not thousands, of hours to our great community. We've got incredible volunteers who volunteer in almost every single division and do great work on behalf of all of our communities. So thanks to all of the volunteers that we have and for others that are looking for ways to connect and be a part of the town and be able to either pay it forward or be a part of community. We'd love to have new volunteers joining our town ranks. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Moving on, item seven, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. I am just going to recuse myself completely from the consent agenda vote due to personal reasons on item G. Vice Mayor will take over.
Thank you. So consent agenda, all matters listed on a consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, do we have anything to remove? Okay, with that, I will take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed by electronic vote.
Thank you. Second?
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
That passes.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Item eight, a proposed town code amendment for finance policy revisions, consideration of possible action. Ms. Pale, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. This is the item that we brought before you on April 14th and we have no additional information unless you all have any further questions regarding those policy revisions.
If we don't have anything, we have to have a reading of this.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona adopting by reference that certain document, finance policy amendments declared by resolution number 2022-2247 to be a public record, amending in the town code section 2-02-040, powers and duties of the mayor in article 2-02 mayor and chapter 2, mayor and council, section 3-02-010, town manager in article 3-02 officers in sections 3-04-010, purchasing procedure, and 3-04-030 bidding in article 3-04 purchasing procedure in chapter 3 administration and repealing and reenacting section 3-04-050, performance bond in article 3-04 purchasing procedure in chapter 3 administration for all for the purpose of authorizing changes to town financial policies that correspond with best practices. Providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of town code, not here and repealed or amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision, this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Clerk, shall this ordinance pass?
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item B, proposed town code amendment, council compensation, consideration of possible action. Second reading, Mr. Davidson, do you have anything to add?
No, unless there's any questions from the council.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending section 2-01-050, compensation in article 2-01 council and chapter 2, mayor and council of the town code permit compensation of the mayor and council to include the choice of any of the same health benefits provided to town employees, not including retirement, life, and disability. At the same contribution rates as full-time employees, providing that if any provisions in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Clerk, shall this ordinance pass?
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item nine, new business, final development plan, FDP 22-003, Caliber Collision. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council. This is final development plan 22-003 for Caliber Collision. This is an auto repair shop. It is actually slated to go on the corner of Truewood and State Route 69. We have had this project before us. There were stipulations that were added by the commission. Now it's back before us again. Part of the stipulations were the screening, which is the block wall. If you see on your lower right, that it's a rendition of the wall itself. We actually added additional landscaping to the project. It meets all town standards at this point. There's really not much left to add. There was conversation in regards to reciprocal access to tractor supply next door. That conversation is still ongoing. I believe there's also a question in regards to the filtration system. I looked into that and that actually is a state-of-the-art filtration system. It appears that the particulates are, I guess the best way to describe it is when your home AC units, there's filters in the house that you have to change periodically. Those are more sophisticated. There's a number of those that have to go through the process that catch all the particulates in the paint and doesn't allow that to extend out to the atmosphere. With that being said, staff would recommend approval of FDP 22-003 and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I believe council for the applicant is here as well if you have questions of that.
Council, you have anything? This has been, I would say, a fairly vetted project over the last few months, so. If we don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number 2022-2243, adopting final development plan FDP 22-003 by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert, if you would please let your client know that we appreciate them picking Prescott Valley.
Thank you. Glad to have you. Glad to be here.
Sounds good. Item B, final development plan, FDP 22-004, crossings at Windsong Apartments. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council. This application is final development plan FDP 22-004 for the crossing at Windsong Apartments. This project is going to be slated to be on the corner of Civic Drive and Windsong Drive. It is currently zoned RSPAD. The use is allowed by matter of right. We actually did do a traffic study and it found that there was no changes needed for Civic Drive or Windsong. However, curb, gutter, and sidewalk will be required for this project. There is two means of access, one off of Windsong and one off of Civic Drive. This project will actually enjoy amenities such as a swimming pool, a health spa, pickle courts, and others. This project has been reviewed by staff and it meets all our current town standards at this time. As you can see, it also has a fence up there. It looks like a vinyl type fence that'll go around the property. At this time, staff would like to recommend approval of FDP 22-004 and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just for correction, Mr. Gonzalez, I think the fence is to show the shielding of the dumpsters.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I just want to make sure so everyone knows that that's not going around the area.
No, not around the property.
Okay. Council, will you have questions for Mr. Gonzalez? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number 2022-2249 approving final development plan FDP 22-004 for the crossings at Windsong Apartments by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item C, microtransit operations and oversight service contract. Mr. Rodriguez, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to be here today with you to give you a slight update as well as recommend a contract for award. So as you can see here, we are very proud of this new branding design for our vehicles. I know that in the past, we've provided you with kind of little glimpses of what that would look like. So these are going to be for, this design is for the town-owned vehicles. Previously, we had a design that kind of had some perforation on the windows, so it was a complete wrap design. But after doing a little bit more research and it's best for us to not have perforation on those windows, so the design changed substantially. But we're very pleased this is consistent with what we had proposed and what the town residents had asked for, which was that kind of Subway, MTA-type logo design and branding. So just wanted to give you that update as well as we're going to receive these vehicles actually next week and we're going to present them at the parade, May 7th, so for Prescott Valley. So here, I kind of expanded the, each of these category, or each of these, I guess, milestones in our timeline. So we've completed the first two big milestones, which were the vehicle purchases, doing the research, starting the RFP process. We've awarded, now going to the next milestone, we've awarded multiple microtransit contractors for a variety of items and the last one being today, which is for the development of transit plans and programs. And so kind of looking at the third and fourth, we have the coordination and the onboarding of these contractors as well as working with the taxi and livery companies. So that's going to be our next big step. We're creating some policies and we're going to begin some conversations with them and working with those companies to make this work, so. We're also going to conduct a roadshow and then finally reveal the system implementation date. Right now, we have, you know, provided with you all, or to you all, late summer, early fall implementation, but, or to the public. But to you all, we've informed you about August 15th being our target, which is still our target. So we just want to be very careful with that date. But anyway, just want to provide you with that and. And so we'll have, I guess the end result is having a micro-transit app that's available to the public, having a taxi pool, dedicated vehicles, our communications office set up for any type of questions that come up, and then creation of some partnerships, hopefully a little bit, it'll, that's kind of in continuation after service implementation. So the other piece of this is, town staff is recommending a ward for the transit plans and programs development. So there's a big piece in all of this. In order to continue funding through the CARES Act, we need to be compliant with certain items from the Federal Transit Administration. And so these, this SRF Consulting Agency, they're gonna help us with these two plans that we're gonna develop, which is related to Civil Rights Program, which is Title VI, as well as an agency safety plan. So we need to make sure that we are compliant with them. The total contract cost is gonna be $161,500, and again, this is gonna go through Federal CARES Act, and we'll be completing this, these two plans by about mid-July. So the town recommends, or town staff recommends approval of the proposed agreement for development of transit plans and programs, services with SRF Consulting Group, item, agenda item 9C.
Looks like there's a light-
And if you have any questions, sorry.
Light at the end of this tunnel. All right, we're getting close.
And then new things will happen, so.
Council, will you have any questions? Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, Pedro, did you say they're coming in next week or this week?
The vehicles? They'll be coming in next week, I believe, Monday or Tuesday.
And they'll have, they're gonna have our colors and everything on?
Yeah.
So I wonder if you can still get in the PV Days Parade?
Well, they will be.
Yeah, we've already submitted our application for that.
So you are? Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, they got us going. We're all set for that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Are you, you've already been in talks with the other local taxi and livery businesses?
With some of them, not all of them.
And how's that going? Are they pretty excited to be a part of it, or?
So a big, a big piece that, before getting down into the nitty-gritty, if you will, we need to have policies in place so that we can, not necessarily set policies, but we want to have a good document saying, hey, this is the type of service level that we want, that we're expecting, and then we'll be able to talk back and forth in saying, okay, yes, we can do this, or no, we can do that. So kind of a development of that policy is that next step. So we've been working on that policy right now. We've had some conversations with a handful of them. The service provider, New Horizons, has already had contact with a couple of them as well. So right now, it's kind of just, we're trying to gauge their interest and see what they will or will not do, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Great question.
I wanted to thank you for your thoroughness in covering just about every aspect of the procedures and the training and the safety plan that will be in place with this SRF consulting firm, so that we are in compliance with ADOT and with the state and federal laws. And I read through several pages of those links that were attached to the, to the contract, and it was very, very thorough, and I just appreciate that very much, and protecting us as a council and the town of Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Ivan also has, has a big, big part in that, so.
Will you have nothing else? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve an agreement with SRF Consulting Group for development of transit plans and program services in the amount of $161,500 by electronic vote.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item D, Town Code Amendment Change for Work-Study Time: Consideration and Possible Action. Mr. Davidson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item, it relates to authorization to allow our work-study sessions, which are held on the first Thursday of the month, to begin at 3:00 rather than the 5:30 traditional start time. This does not affect our regular sessions, which are held on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month. Those will continue to be at 5:30. The reason for that is the town has always valued to have, making sure that the public that may be working during the day can be able to speak at a council meeting, a call to the public. The work-study sessions typically are opportunities for the council and staff to be able to do a deeper dive into particular issues that will be showing up on future agenda items. So that's why one of the changes. In addition, we oftentimes will have outside guests that sometimes are coming in to provide additional information. It makes it difficult when you have people having to come into Prescott Valley later in the evening and have to return back to where they're coming from for work-study sessions. So that's one of the other changes. In addition, being able to have some of this work done during the working hours, it's, you know, certainly supportive with staff not having to extend beyond overtime and compensate, you know, any impacts from that perspective. All of the sessions are recorded, and we do it through a number of different means, so the public will still have full access to anything that's discussed in a work-study that's held a couple hours earlier than the traditional start time. So that's what this ordinance change allows, and if you have any questions, I can certainly address that.
Counsel, will you have any questions for Mr. Davidson? No, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to read ordinance number 2022, amending Town Code 2-04010 to change work-study meeting times to 3:00 PM by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage by electronic vote. I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe you're gonna read the ordinance.
In ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Section 2-04-010, Regular Work-Study Meetings in Article 2-04, Council Procedure in Chapter 2, Mayor and Council of the Town Code, to change the time for work-study meetings from 5:30 PM to 3:00 PM, providing that if any provisions in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to our last item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Everyone have a great night. Thanks for coming out.